Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 6, 2023 Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I will call on Commissioner Faircloth to do the invocation and pledge.
Let us stand to honor God and country, please. Heavenly Father, once again, it is our privilege to be in your presence to do the business of our county. We ask that you would bless these proceedings, Lord, as we make decisions on behalf of every citizen, that we would keep uppermost in mind the best interest of all citizens of our county. These things we ask in your name. Amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, good morning. We have one change to the agenda. Item 5E, the Cape Fear Valley Health System Board of Trustees. We're asking for both a nomination and a vote on those seats.
Okay, thank you. If I can get an approval of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
My second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Madam Manager?
Yes. For the benefit of the public and the media, our General Manager for Environmental Services, Amanda Bader, will give a short update on where our efforts stand with public engagement for the work being proposed at the Ann Street landfill.
Good morning. I'm going to pass out a fact sheet about the landfill expansion for your reference and use.
Thank you.
Good morning to you. How you doing this morning?
Okay. So, just to give you a very quick update, I don't want to seem repetitive, but this is very important to know, the Ann Street landfill will be out of space in 2030. And if we do not take action now, we will have no place for our garbage to go. So, we have a plan for expansion with the construction of a transfer station and with mining our existing bail field, which is an old unlined landfill, to allow room for new sales. We have a request for proposals for transfer hauling and disposal that is out for bid. We anticipate receipt of those bids March 31st, 2023. So, the plan is to build the transfer station, perform pilot testing for the bail field excavation. Now, what we hope to determine through that excavation is the level of degradation, recovery rates, that sort of thing. So, that pilot testing will start in the next 30 to 60 days. And so, that will be going concurrently with the RFQ and the transfer construction. We will be expanding the landfill stated earlier while mining the bail field westward to create airspace. And the most important step right now is we need feedback from the community and from the public. So, our schedule is to complete the transfer station mid-2024. I talked about starting the bail field pilot study that will go on for six to 12 months. We are talking about constructing a cell within five years in the bail field area, but we will continue the transfer for about 10 years. And we will use the transfer station less as we make more space in the bail field to save cost. So, we are working with HDR. HDR has been here to talk with you all about public outreach. We are going to be holding a public open house meeting on March 2nd. That will be from 4:00 to 7:00 at the DSS building. We will provide additional opportunity to provide feedback online after the public meeting. And today, we have a project website that is live. And you can access that website, CumberlandCountyNC.gov/AnnStreetPlan. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Commissioner Adams?
My question is not necessarily to you. It may be to staff. We did send a letter to the City of Fayetteville asking about miling yards, because this is expensive. We know it's expensive. Have we had any kind of return or any kind of where we are with the City of Fayetteville on the miling yards, which then saves this whole community an awful lot of money?
We have had discussions with the City of Fayetteville and are moving forward with looking at property, looking at them giving us miling yard in exchange for perhaps other property.
Okay. So, I saw this presentation, which has deadlines in it. Is there some deadline? At some point, we've got to move forward. I guess so. Is the city aware of this is a deadline? We got to send them a note saying this is the deadline. We either know yea and nay whether we're going to do this. If not, we move forward on this project. Otherwise, we get so far down the road, it doesn't really matter.
Well, our belief is that we should continue down both paths, that the transfer station is going to be necessary whether we expand the landfill into miling yard or not. And so, we need to move forward on both fronts.
Wait a minute. I'm kind of lost now. I thought it was either/or, so it's kind of update me. I'm, yeah.
Okay. So, where we are now is the negotiations with miling yard are taking time. And there are some regulatory concerns that we need to address with miling yard.
Got that part.
And we are working on those concerns. And I'm working on some points for what it will look like in negotiations with miling yard. The problem is that now that we are seven years into without having airspace, we feel like the transfer station is going to be necessary to ensure that we have landfill capacity beyond 2030.
That's kind of different what we've been hearing the whole time. I mean, this is new, this is really new information to me, because it was my understanding that if we got miling yards, we wouldn't need to do that transfer station and take all of this down the area. If that's the case, we don't even need to be, I don't understand the negotiation. We better do this, and the cost is going to be, I mean, the cost is, I always thought was prohibitive, and I thought we were moving toward this, so they didn't have to do that. When did we get to that point that we had to do both of these? That's where, that, that's new to, maybe you all heard it, but that's new to me. Today is a new day.
Okay. So, we are looking at those proposals and looking at those costs. Those costs do need to be evaluated. We are running into some challenges with the negotiations in miling yard. And those challenges, I'm afraid, are going to take considerable time. And we, is my goal and my job to make sure that we do not run out of landfill space at Ann Street. The transfer station provides a tremendous contingency for Ann Street, given the complexity of what we are facing with miling yards. Miling yards still offers a tremendous amount of capacity if we are successful in acquiring that property. But at the current point that we are, with seven years remaining capacity, we need to ensure that we have somewhere for the garbage to go. Now, we can make some suggestions, and with a schedule for permitting, if we do get miling yard, is going to be several years. And then, when we add the several years plus the construction of the new cell, we're going to be very close to that seven-year timeline. And the concern is that if we were to have a natural disaster, the impact on our airspace could be significant.
Well, we knew that going in. What you're telling me now, we would have known going in, so, I mean, we would have just gone on, from my standpoint, we'd have just gone on with the transfer station and moved on. Madam, I'm sorry, she's got.
Madam Manager? So, we've come to this realization over the last few weeks as we've talked through the timeframe. Amanda's met with the county attorney. We've had several meetings and talked through how, what the timeline is going to look like. And it's clear to us that even if we get miling yard, we're, there's a possibility of not having it permitted in time to address our waste needs. And for that reason, we believe we need to move forward on both fronts. Miling yard offers an estimated 50 years of capacity, so it's really important that for the future of the county's waste disposal, that we move ahead with miling yard, but we need to have a Plan B in case either it gets stalled at the city in the negotiations between the city and the county, or the permit gets stalled at the state level. We need to have a Plan B.
Push your button.
Anybody got a question?
Commissioner Faircloth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little bit behind the curve on the negotiations here, because I've missed some of the, some of the preliminary talks. So, let me just ask a couple of questions. First off, is landfill, is that one of those things that's on our necessary state functions that we have to do?
Yes.
Okay.
We've got to provide for waste disposal.
So, first off, the county must provide waste disposal, right? So, every county in, every county in the state either has a landfill or has some arrangement with some other county probably. Is that correct? Is that the way it is? Okay. Second, we operate, the landfill operation as an enterprise fund, is that correct also?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have to make money on it, basically. So, if, if our costs increase substantially, we're going to pass those costs along to whoever our customers are. Is that correct?
Yes.
Who's our number one customer?
The Cumberland County citizens are our number one customer.
But somebody we charge, right? Who do we charge? And who, we're charging people to?
We do charge people. We, now, the availability fee that we charge to citizens includes disposal cost for residential garbage. The tipping fees that we charge are for contractors and for commercial entities, industrial users, that sort of thing. But citizens are charged an availability fee on the tax bill, which includes their rates for disposal. So, if you have a purely residential disposal collector, then they don't pay tipping fees, because that's included in the availability fee, except for Spring Lake, who does not pay an availability fee.
Okay. Do municipalities pay when their garbage trucks roll up?
No. Now, not for residential, but for bulky items, for furniture, for other, other items that are beyond your household kitchen and bathroom trash, that, that they are paid for with tipping fees. But your residential trash is included in the availability fee. And when a municipality brings their garbage, as long as it is garbage that was picked up from the residence, there, in terms of household garbage, there is no charge at the landfill.
Trying to figure out how we're going to recover our costs.
The availability fee would be how the costs would be recovered.
And that's paid on individual tax bill?
That's paid on the individual tax bill.
Wow, okay.
Commissioner Council?
I applaud your efforts to work over the years with this problem. You told us about it several years ago. In fact, a couple of people before you came told us that we were going to run out of space. What I'm going to suggest is that we cannot make this final decision today. We know who is holding it up and why. Sometimes things happen just because people can, okay? We remember the example of our emergency services building, which was a year and a half, almost two years off schedule, because we tried a collaborative approach. But my suggestion is that you and Madam Manager help us during the month of March to make final decisions. But we cannot do it now. I don't think it's fair to do it now. We want what's best for all citizens, and you have done an excellent job in planning and in moving us forward. But the dinosaur remembers. Okay?
Commissioner Adams?
Commissioner Faircloth, I'll go back to your question on the enterprise fund, because you did come a little bit later. And in all their presentations, they've given us some great presentations. We have some of the lowest fees of any of the counties around us and have not raised those fees in a number of years. And so, that has been, and will come, hopefully, through the budget season. And we, so, when y'all came, Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Faircloth, y'all missed that presentation, and I think Madam Manager and those can bring you up on that, in terms of the fees that we charge compared to everybody around us. And we had a presentation of what the cost would be going to the transfer station as opposed to getting miling yard. So, we may need to send them that information and update, because that will, I think, have a direct impact on whatever decision you make. I guess my other question would be, if we do this and we've able to get miling yards, and I do understand all of the stuff with miling yards and all that, does the transfer station and the traffic back and forth through area farers, can that be scaled down so that the cost is not quite as what we would do if we didn't have miling yard? That's not a question to answer today. I just asked you to think about that of what size, what, what that transfer station would look like, and whether we need it as, as what we would have if we didn't have miling yards, and if we had miling yard, knowing that it would be sometime before we were able to be able to do that. And I think that's, if we can get that, I think that, that leads to that. So, but great presentation. Thank you. Keep us updated. I think every time.
And we will have updates as we get these costs.
Right.
Then I will be able to give you more information. We're bringing in more and more information.
Every day.
And I will share that with you when we have transfer cost and when we know who's the lowest proposer on disposal.
Right. Just whatever size that transfer station has to be. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Great.
And now, we will move on to our public library. Madam Manager?
Yes. Exciting things are happening in Cumberland County libraries. Our library director, Faith Phillips, will give you an update on several of these items this morning.
Amanda's taller than I am. There we go. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Managers.
Good morning.
So, thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. There we go. To provide an update on all that the library team is doing to serve our community. There we go. Okay. So, in this brief update, I want to share with you updates on our library operations and our vision, new service and program initiatives. And then, I'd like to share with you about an award that our system recently won and a position that I have assumed throughout the state. Over the past year, we have been working to reimagine many of our library spaces to better serve the needs of our community. Many of the new initiatives, services, and vision from the library system are from conversations with community members and from a community needs assessment that was done in 2019, 2020. At our headquarters library, we are working to reimagine and activate the space on our second floor. We have been moving stacks. We have been working to turn our storytime room into a makerspace. And in that makerspace, we're going to have 3D printers, hopefully a laser cutter. We will have video and video production equipment, sound production equipment, along with other items. You're going to be seeing walls painted, new, new furniture. And in February, we are hoping to install an eight-foot by six-foot light bright called a lightzilla, which is that bottom picture from right. We will be installing a bubble tube and other interactives on the floor to enhance our capacity for STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math education, and sensory inclusion. All of this work has been funded through a grant from the State Library of North Carolina. We are also working at our headquarters library on elements that support your federal agenda. We want to have science-related children's museum items. We're exploring more STEAM and sensory items, as well as things that relate directly to what our community members are asking for. So, an example of this is Heather, our interim deputy director, has been connecting with many groups in the county, including homeschool groups, and asking how the library can support them. They've asked for things like microscopes and other science-related activities. So, we're exploring how the library can have museum elements to encourage children to interact with STEM and STEAM concepts, but also vocations, like medicine, building, and other items. However, headquarters is not the only place we have been working to make changes for our system. A great deal of work has happened at our West Regional Library, where the team has created a dedicated teen space, new seating areas, an open storytime area with interactive for families and children. We are working to create a dedicated teen space at our East Regional Library and a dedicated children's space at our Bordeaux Branch Library. We will be working over the next two years to expand all of this work to all eight of our library locations. So, I'm very excited to share two new service initiatives that we are working on. We are working to, on these initiatives, to serve individuals in our communities with disabilities and to provide them with workforce development and job skills training. The first of these initiatives is a partnership with Service Source Incorporated and the Cumberland County Schools to provide internships for students in the Works for Me Occupational Program. We are currently in the process of drafting and reviewing the legal agreements needed for these programs. Our second initiative is working with Service Source to open a coffee shop at our West Regional Library, hiring individuals with disabilities. We are in the process of seeking grant funding for startup costs of this project. The emphasis for these projects is providing workforce development, job skills training for individuals in our community with disabilities in a welcoming, nurturing environment in our libraries. We are also continuing to work on reallocating a position in our library system to be a peer navigator. This peer support, peer navigator position would be a staff member who is especially trained to help meet customers where they are at their point of need and to connect them with needed resources. This connects with your federal legislative agenda item of more social workers in libraries. We are partnering with Alliance Behavioral Health to provide adult mental health first aid training to all library staff. The goal of this course is to continue to help equip staff as they work to serve our community members. I would also like to report that our new service initiative of providing hotspots to our community, all 100 are checked out, and we have a waiting list. This initiative, along with our digital navigators, has been a great way we are working to help provide digital equity and access in our community. New program initiatives. We have also been busy with new program initiatives. In the spring and summer, our community members will see increased programs on topics like coding, robotics, science, and cyber technology. We have had classes on FAFSA prep, and we will be having a future fair at our Clifdale Library to help young adults learn about vocational and educational options. We have had trainings for staff on sensory inclusion in programs and incorporating STEAM and STEM topics in their programs. We're going to be working to expand our weekend program offerings to provide more opportunities for all community members to have access to library resources. We are also celebrating Black History Month at our libraries. We have had a number of programs in celebration. We had a great program on Saturday at North Regional. We are having a program throughout the month at Clifdale on unsung African-American heroes. We have our NC Reads Book Club at headquarters, which has been focusing on books set in North Carolina that have topics on racial and social justice. We have feature book displays throughout all of our library locations and are highlighting our resources that are related to celebrate the month. Finally, I would like to invite all of you to join us on March 4th at Festival Park from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. for our Storytelling Festival kickoff. So, March marks our annual storytelling festival. We have local storytellers, local performers, a bilingual storyteller, drum performances, and other local groups celebrating the rhythm of a story. We will also be partnering with Fayetteville State University throughout the month for several music programs that will be at our headquarters library. So, finally, I would like to congratulate library staff for their award from the North Carolina Public Libraries Directors Association for the CC Reads program that you all approved, providing library cards for staff free of charge regardless of their county of residence. This program was awarded as an innovative service in the state, and our two digital navigators, who are pictured there, Jackie and Ymina, joined me at the winter meeting in Winston-Salem to showcase the project and accept the award. Finally, I would like to share that I am serving as the president of the North Carolina Public Libraries Directors Association for the year 2023. So, in that role, I will be able to work with directors across the state as we advocate for funding for libraries, to enhance professional development for the profession, and expand services in libraries for all North Carolinians. So, thank you so much for your time today and for your continued support of our libraries. Thank you.
Let me say this before Commissioner Adams takes over. Mr. Brady, this is front page news. Kudos to you. Congratulations. You've done well. You have served well. You are deserving of this promotion. I'm so excited.
Thank you.
For you and excited for everything that's happening at our library. Okay, I'll go ahead and let Commissioner Adams.
Well, picture. You've got a new president. We at least.
We're going to get a picture. Okay. But kudos to you.
Thank you.
Kudos, kudos, kudos to you.
Thank you.
My friend has an awesome mom, and my other friend has an awesome wife.
Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Adams?
Oh, you all know that the library is special to my heart. Advocated for the library. We've got Irene Graham, who is here.
Yes.
She's on, has been on, and is on the Board of Trustees at the library. She's shaking her head no, but that library Board of Trustees, I was the liaison of that board, they do an awesome job, and I would not, and I want to send congratulations out to the Library Board of Trustees. They really do work. There's a lot of times you're on a board that just is there, but they actually do hands-on. But also, the friends of the library.
Yes.
It would be remiss if I did not recognize the friends of the library who do an awesome job.
Absolutely.
In terms of supporting the library. We've got friends all over this community to do that. Only got three things, three things today. And I guess I would go to either ARP committee or to the manager. If we, we know we're going to build out the rest of our broadband with bright speed and all of that, but if we've got 100 hotspots and they're all gone, and we've got a waiting list, that makes no sense to me when we've got some funds from off or whatever. There's a, where is Mr. Ty back there? This is what we, what needs to happen. If that waiting list is there, Madam Manager and, and staff and library, is whether we need to do some additional funds out of that to be able to do that. And I would possibly look to maybe even go to our ARP committee or to our general fund. That's a needed resource for our community. I don't know how many people are on that waitlist, but that shouldn't have to happen. So, that's a tremendous. And to go back to, you can go back to that screen.
Yes.
I think this is just awesome. I think, you know exactly which screen I want with the two, with Service Source. I think that we can never leave behind any of our citizens as we do this. And I would tell you that the internship program with Service Source and the Cumberland County Schools, to be able to take our students who have those disabilities, to be able to bring them in and start here, because it's my belief that in order to have private, or us to be able to push us to be able to push our private industry to do this, government sometimes has to start this. We have to do, to be the flame to this. And when this internship program works and we show it works, it can then move out into the community. And these kids who would normally go home after graduation at 18 and not have a job, I was at the Cumberland County Disabilities where, this is how it all started, with Ms. Jarvis, she's just a tremendous friend of Jarvis. The deaf kids would, you know, nowadays you go online to apply for jobs. And they would apply for jobs and they would get the job. And when they showed up and they found out they were deaf, they'd say that job was filled last week. And so here they are, not necessarily going to college, but could be out here in our community doing that. And so this is the first part of getting that internship, getting them some workforce to be able to do that. And then at West Regional, I guess this goes back to Commissioner Fairclough probably and Commissioner Council, who had the forethought to install a coffee shop out there when y'all built that. So to those two commissioners who were on here and whoever else, those prior commissioners, that was ahead of whatever it was. And now to be able to turn this into possibly a partnership, partnership with Service Source, it just works. It works for our community. I know I'm rambling on, but there are some things that I think that need to be emphasized. And I'm just going to tell you, tremendous work. It was not easy. We've been doing this for a while, trying to get this done. And then my last thing, and I know Commissioner Fairclough wanted that, as we do this STEM, and you're talking about that and doing it at our regional libraries, is whether we might be able to talk to the children's museum, to have the library do some kind of collaboration with the children's museum.
Absolutely.
To be able to bring some of those resources over into that, that collaboration. Thank you for the library. Thank you. Congratulations. You know, that's where my heart is. I've always been with the library, from a little kid ongoing. That's where I used to go and get my books. And I'm still online doing the, with my library. And I know I can read the Fair观 observer through the library online.
Yes, thank you.
Don't have to pay for it. Thank you, Madam.
Ms. Grams.
I just want to emphasize.
Use the microphone.
She's awesome.
She is awesome.
There's no question about it.
She is awesome.
And it takes a leader like that, she has an absolutely awesome staff, and it takes a leader like that to bring out the best qualities in your staff. I discovered the other day that I'm getting to be an old lady. We need people like her who, you know, are young and dynamic, and we need to invite them into this county and give them the opportunity to thrive. And she's doing that.
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Fairclough.
I'm just trying to refresh my memory of that coffee shop. That's at New Century School, is that right?
Correct.
Kind of picture, kind of picture where that was. Okay, got it now.
It's a great library. It's a great, it's a great library.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I would like, before we move on to the consent agenda introductions, please. Madam Manager?
Yes. It's my privilege this morning to introduce a very special guest. Our new manager, Clarence Greer, is here with us this morning, and I believe he'd like to say a couple words.
Welcome, welcome, Mr. Greer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Just like to say I'm happy to be here. Got stuck in traffic a little bit. There's one outside of Spring Lake. I've been catching up on everything. I see I am behind and the list has gotten longer. But I'll be here March 1st. Really, I'll be here February 28th. I plan to attend the economic forum that morning. But I look forward to working with all of you all and excited and moving to Fayetteville and getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Now, we will move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager, is there anything, any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
No, Madam Chairwoman. It stands as it was published.
Move to.
Madam Chair, before you do that, I would, if you do release, and I recommend that you release those minutes from closed session minutes for personnel from November 21st, I'd also ask after you do that to ratify the actions taken. That was with respect to the contract to Mr. Greer and the final compensation to the former county manager.
All right.
What?
Just ratify the actions taken.
I got it. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
As we did release those November 21st, 2022 closed session minutes, I would move to ratify the action taken in those minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay.
So the first item of business is a scheduled change for the agenda session in March. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has requested that Cumberland County host the district meeting, a district meeting on March 9th, which is the regular date for the agenda session. We are requesting then, in order to be able to do that, to move the agenda session to Tuesday, March 7th.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second.
Question?
She had a.
Commissioner Fairclough.
What, what time does that meeting start?
6:00 p.m. 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
Yes.
Why, why are we in conflict with it then?
To get everything set up over at the location where we'll be. So staff will be out of the office that afternoon to.
I understand. So we're, so we're doing it for the.
Yeah, they're expecting on that district meeting, what, 45?
Forty-five to fifty-two.
Fifty people. Yeah, coming in.
Yeah, I've been to them. I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't know what the, I didn't know what staff involvement was, because we, I don't think we've done it in a while.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
All right.
Okay. Madam Manager, moving on.
So the next item is consideration of an agreement with former county manager Amy Cannon for consulting work and approval of a budget amendment to make that happen.
Are there any questions? If I can get a motion?
I move that we approve the contract and budget amendment.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Unanimous. I will now call on the vice chair for nomination and appointments.
Madam Chair, that takes us to the cemetery commission, just in case any of y'all show up out there. We would nominate J.F. Hall and Kenneth Slankard.
Slankard.
Slankard. What else?
I think you said Slankard.
It's S.L.A.
Slankard. Slink.
Okay. S.L.A.N.K.A.R.D. So for the record. Are there any other nominations? That would take us to the board of adjustments. These are for the alternate members, Joe Von Bowser, Donald Brooks, and Brené Orozco.
Okay.
All right. That takes us to the civic center commission. And you will see that the civic center board asked that these three people coming off, that their term, because of, I guess, the building of the center, that they've been there and that they be reappointed. I would tell you that I'm not in favor of that. I think that the reason you have people on boards and roll off is because there's always some people behind them that can pull it up, and that's why that has been done. But if this board decides to do that and keep these, I would just ask that then that their term is not a full term, that it only be for a year as we build that. But I think that's why we have people roll off and roll on at different times for that particular purpose. And so just to say I need to keep some people makes no sense to me. But I am at the board's pleasure. I would nominate if they need or not.
Any discussion? Commissioner Jones.
I know that I'm new coming aboard, but moving forward and also with this, I would like to be able to see some of these applicants, applications. I mean, I do trust the board's decisions when they bring things forth, but when I'm voting on things, I do like to, you know, look at the information. So, in other words, next time in advance, like I know we're voting on this now, but I haven't really seen anybody's information.
It's, it's in our packet.
Right. If you go down and hit the, further down.
Applicant list.
I mean, I see the applicant list, but where's the resume at, other than just their names? I'd like to.
No, if you go farther down until the applicant list they have, whether they've been to any of our things that they have and what they have.
I think we even give them credit if they go onto the city stuff, too. I think they, you know, if they've gone to some sort of training in the city stuff.
Okay, yes. I guess because I'm trying to, you know, being new, trying to get familiar with this, I see that information. Okay, now I see it. Like last time I voted, it wasn't there. I mean, I still went ahead trusting the judgment, but I would just like to look at it more in advance.
Yeah, it's always there. And you just got to go to, it's really kind of crazy the way we do, not crazy, but you go roster application list and then it goes to the recommendations. You got to hit each one of those separately to be able to get all of that information.
It's not in one document.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I see that, but just like, I know we're trying to update on the website, but other applicants as well. Like when I want to review who's going up for these positions, my understanding when I asked about it, they don't have that on the website yet. So in other words, if it doesn't come here, I get that a lot from the community. People are saying, what's going on with my application? I filled it out. So just to see who's applying in the community. And my understanding, I was told that we're trying to put that on the website, but it's not there yet. Is that correct?
We're not putting the applicant list on the website, but.
They can apply on the website.
Yes, and we only, the entire applicant list is attached to the agenda. But we do not receive resumes with their application. It's a standard application and they can put, if they've attended any leadership courses.
But if people send an email to you, resume is correct, we have access. I'm just saying because some people have sent some things to me individually, I'm going to be honest, that they sent, I don't know where they sent it, I'll find out. I assume they sent it to you, and they said they thought that we, the commissioners, were going to look at it. So I asked them to send it me directly.
I have not received resumes.
Okay. We'll talk about that offline.
Commissioner Council. I was going to suggest that we move this item also to our work session and make a decision.
Which is tomorrow? That's fine.
Not tomorrow.
Oh.
But March.
Yeah, I just, I'm not in, I will go, I agree with you on that. I just think we need to have a discussion about it as opposed to it just showing up. So if you make a motion to move it to March agenda session, I would second that motion.
That is my motion, sir.
I'd let, before we do a second on that, Commissioner Booth.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Jones, and it seems like when we start getting names we don't recognize, we don't get anything but their name. You can find out about it, though, if you ask for the applications or, you know, follow up with it. But on some of these committees, the first time we see it is when the name comes up. And like Mr. Adams says, I recognize the names, and I recognize the names in two ways. One, I'm very, very appreciative of their expertise and their talent and their skill of coming back and willing to do it the first time and then to repeat it. But I also agree with them that sometimes it just, just to say, these are only four people that know anything about doing this in the whole county, I think is absurd, because the four people that just got renamed, or three people that just got renamed, didn't know anything when they got on there. So I think the more we educate, the more we have a better pool. And quite honestly, I probably hear the same, same things from Commissioner Jones' people, is they want to know how to break into the, break into the list. How do I get, how do I get on any list? Do I have to start off with some, like the cemetery commission and not die and then get nominated somewhere else? I mean, you know, I mean, they just really, they want to know how they, because everybody else hears the same names out there, too, Ron T.V. So they hear, you know, don't mean to use the name, but Joe Jones, you know, it's a common name like that over and over and over again, whether it's on the board they're going on. Or if we don't break precedent and put them on repeat times, we just give them to another board. So I have no problem moving it to March or we can vote now. But I agree, and this is scary, I agree with Mr. Adams again about, you know, I think, I think the more, the more, the more experts, the more experts we get out there, the better, rather than just, you know, wait for ours all to tell us, no, I'm retired.
Okay, it's been, there was a motion on the floor to move the civic center commission nominations to our March meeting. Is there a second?
I second, she made it.
It's been motioned and properly second to move it to the March meeting. All those in favor?
Agenda setting.
Agenda setting.
Not the meeting, the agenda.
The agenda setting. In March.
Unanimous.
Okay.
That takes us to the Mid-Carolina Agent Advisory, Patricia Edwards. She's eligible for reappointment and the nominations, Patricia Edwards. As we did in the consent agenda, was the Cape Fear Valley Board of Trustees would be a nomination and appointment. There is Larry Lancaster and Ernest Jones. I would move for that nomination and appointment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Fairclough, Commissioner Council, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Booth. Voting in opposition is Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. At this time, if we can get a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to go into closed, closed session pursuant to personnel matters pursuant to NCGS 14331811A6, an attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS 14331811A3.
Second.
It's been motioned and properly second. All those in favor? Closed session?
So move.
Second. It's been moved and properly second to come out of closed session. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
If I can get a motion towards her.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Motion carries. All in favor? Aye, and we out of here.